This is Penn, look.
Go ahead.
Meeting call to order today is Tuesday, February 11th, and it's now 6:13 PM. Town council meeting in the town council chambers, 1170 Main Street. Comprehensive Plan Workshop.
Councilman Lichardi.
Here.
Councilman Messier.
Here.
Councilwoman Williamson.
Here.
Council Vice President D'Amico.
Here.
Council President Goslin.
Yes.
There is a quorum. Comprehensive Planning Workshop Public Hearing for Consideration of Ordinance 2019-7. Town council to host a public workshop, public hearing to review the West Warwick Comprehensive Plan update and consider an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the Town of West Warwick by adding thereto Appendix D entitled Town of West Warwick Comprehensive Plan 2019.
Move the ordinance.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Are you running this? Who's running this?
Just to refresh the council's memory, we were back before the council, I think, back in July with an ordinance recommending adoption of the comprehensive plan. As you may be aware, the town's current comprehensive plan has expired and dates back, I believe, to 1995. State requirement used to be that you had to update your comp plan every five years. It's now a ten-year update with a five-year review. At that time, the council wanted to hold this matter, or they tabled the matter, to schedule a public workshop. I think some of the council members had some specific detailed thoughts or questions that they wanted to go into. So, we're here for the workshop. I've asked Emily to put together a little bit of an updated PowerPoint. If you'd like to go through that very briefly, I would invite Emily up to just walk us through to refresh us on the process and some of the details that are in the comprehensive plan, as well as where we're at in the process and where the process would be complete.
That'd be great, because we don't know who's actually watching at home and not watching.
Good evening. My name is Emily Ennis. I'm the Director of Planning for Harriman. I was the project manager for this project, so I've been here from the start working on it. As I said, I have an update to the July presentation. In July, we really focused on what a comprehensive plan was and the process for it. I've added some information about some of the recommendations in the comprehensive plans. So, the key piece for a local comprehensive plan is that it is a guide for local decision-making. It is a policy document that includes a vision, the goals, policies, and actions that support that vision, and those are translated into an implementation plan that talks about who is doing what and when. The goals of a local comprehensive plan, which this would be, must be consistent with the state's goals. So, the state of Rhode Island has a comprehensive guide to creating a local plan, and it also feeds into local land use regulations. So, once this plan is adopted, your zoning regulations would be brought into conformance with the recommendations of the plan. So, the state of Rhode Island has a number of goals which are up here. I'm not going to read them all, and I know you've got the pieces of paper that are this presentation in front of you, but the key piece is that the Comprehensive Planning and Land Use Regulation Act requires that municipality's plan for future development. So, in some states, they recommend it and say it might be a nice idea if you did this, but state of Rhode Island has a requirement that you do that. And as Mark pointed out, there is an updated, must do it every 10 years, and must have a five-year review period. So, for this process, we understood at the time that the town had limited resources, not just for a planning process, but more importantly, for implementation. You have gone through a number of things over the planning process in terms of the fiscal ability to manage this. So, what we wanted to do is create a document, first of all, that was relatively brief and easily readable by people who'd at all stages of understanding of planning. I think there was a concern that the last plan was a bit deep and technical for people who might want to use this on a regular basis. And then use that existing master plan as a base for the recommended goals, policies, and then update them with the public meetings that we had. So, we're incorporating public input into the goals, policies, and actions and figuring out what of the 1995 plan is still useful and has either an ongoing presence in the town or should be updated and made into something new because it's been accomplished. So, to do this, we started with the statewide planning handbook, which has required format and content and sources of data. We reviewed the draft plan, and then the state of Rhode Island, after its review of the draft plan, after you vote, when and if you vote to accept it, the state of Rhode Island has final approval on the plan. The town itself was responsible for the public process. It had a steering committee who had four meetings and reviewed the draft, and there were three public forums. In terms of the approval process, the planning board recommends approval to the town council, which they've done, and then you approve it as an ordinance that moves it to the state. So, our three public forums were in 2016, March, April, and July, and they covered the 13 chapters, not counting the introduction, which would make 14 chapters, the 13 chapters. And what we tried to do is during those public forums is link chapters that had similar topics together. So, for example, the first one, natural resources, recreation, agriculture, services and facilities, and water supply, all linked together. Then we went to historic and cultural resources, housing, economic development, and transportation, linked together. They also linked to the previous one as well. And then finally, wrapping all of that into a discussion of land use, because you have to have a future land use plan, and the implementation program. So, given the vision of the town, given the goals, how do you actually get there to implementation? These are the names of our steering committee, so they were extremely helpful, both in guiding the plan and in their review. The required chapters, I've already mentioned, starting off with an executive summary and ending with implementation program. Each topic, so the ones that are listed, natural resources, recreation, et cetera, has its own chapter, and there's data and information for that. We then tried with the goals to link those together. So, we have five overriding goals, and I think the first one was, to me, the most interesting because it came out both in terms of steering committee and in the public conversations, that this is a town that very much prides itself on its recreational components. So, that's both active athletics and also passive or natural recreation. And so, that came out loud and clear. It's one of the reasons it went up to the top. But the other thing that really fell sort of into that was the idea of the villages and making sure that the villages were active, engaging, mixed-use, starting, of course, with Arctic Village. It has a lot of planning around it already, some of which we helped with, and continuing out from there. And then concentrating multifamily development in those villages. I think past practice had allowed it to, under your current zoning, had allowed it to move into the single families. With that, with the idea of concentrating development in certain areas, helps to address issues of sustainability and resiliency. The stormwater was an issue in understanding how this town has been affected by stormwater and flooding. Also, the idea of alternative energy, which was part of the discussion as we were doing the plan. So, really capturing all of these into how does this town develop and manage itself sustainably? And then with that, not just environmental sustainability or development and economic sustainability, but also the fiscal sustainability of the town. So, how all these components work to create a municipal fiscal system that is an ongoing and stable system. So, that came in. So, I'm not going to read each of these. They're provided for you in the handout, and I'll sort of slowly call them up for anybody who might be watching at home. Yes?
Question.
Yeah, absolutely.
On this handout, is, we received this.
Yes. That's the plan itself.
Okay. So, this is just a summary of this.
Copy didn't pay. Absolutely. Absolutely.
So, you have things that are not in here that are in this to be in the big pack?
Yes. That is correct. So, the big packet has all of the backup to these.
Gotcha.
So, these are the overall, sorry, these are the overall goals. They're found in the first chapter. Each of these goals by topic are also found in that first chapter and then elaborated on the individual chapters. So, for example, natural resources goes through. It has an inventory of what the natural resources are, starts to talk about some of the implications of what's going on, identifies the goals, and then identifies the recommended strategies. And that goes chapter by chapter.
So, if we, we're here tonight.
Yes.
To, because I went through this entire thing a few times. It's a lot. But I've highlighted some areas where I have either questions on or concerns on or things that, yes, we're looking to do, but there's no way we're doing. So, is that appropriate to bring out here tonight?
Yep, absolutely. And, sorry, go ahead.
My understanding that this entire packet has been posted and is on the website also, correct? So, the public did have access to this?
Yes, it's been on the website since July.
Since July. I think so, too. I just want to make sure that you understand that.
I actually, not that we had a lot of people in, but I had three or four people in over the last several months who had kind of development going on in their neighborhoods and their areas, inquiring about where our current comprehensive plan is, where this comprehensive plan is, some of the differences. I think some of them might even have spoken to some of the council members about concerns that they had about our antiquated plan versus where our draft plan would be going. And even asked me to a point where they were going before zoning board or something like that, can I use this information? I said, "Well, you can use it in the respect that's saying, my understanding is, it's a plan under consideration if the town will be going in this direction, but you really can't use it as a document that's been accepted and adopted." And that really had more to do with the multifamily developments going into the single-family neighborhoods where people are really.
And you know that we're going to ask that question, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get there.
So, I will say, your point about some of them are things that you're not going to be able to do is a good one. There's a fine balance with comprehensive planning between what can you realistically do right now and what in looking out 10 years or five years to the review, what do you want to be aspirational so that people sort of think beyond current capabilities? So, that's why you'll find some things that we're looking at saying, next three to five years, probably not. 10 years out, that might be possible. And so, that's why some of that's in there. But certainly, your comments on that are very welcome. So, again, looking at each of these, just going through the topics, you'll see the goals, which were summarized in the first chapter. For most, it's about four or five. When we get to the services and facilities, there are a lot more. But what that is, as I said, there's an inventory in each chapter. It talks about some of the implications, some of what we heard from the public, again, depending on what the chapter is. Agriculture is very short because at the time we were doing this project, I think there was one farm left, but it is required to be covered. So, and then the goals have a series of strategies and recommendations for them. When you get to the final, I'll skip ahead and we can jump back if you have specific questions on the goals. But when you get to the final chapter, 14, you'll see this grid up here. This is the implementation plan. And what it does is it takes, this is two pages of a longer implementation plan, but what it does is it takes the recommended actions by chapter and by goal and puts them together and says, "Okay, given this action, who can," I think it's the next to the last page, "who can, who's the most appropriate body to implement this action?" And in some cases, it might be multiple. So, just to take an easy example, if you are doing a zoning change, it's going to be the planning board and yourselves who are responsible with town staff supporting. If it's recreation, you might have a public and private component to it. If it's services and facilities, obviously, say it's something for the fire department or the police department, they would be involved with the implementation as well. So, the idea is to get from the detailed discussion in each of the strategies into a plan that gives you, these are the people that should be looking at it, and here's a rough timeline of when they should be looking at it. So, that's what the implementation plan does. I'm happy to go through more of each of these in detail or take questions, and then we can go back and forth between these and the plan. You've got a copy of it with you. Yep. So, however your preference is.
How many other communities have you worked with?
In Rhode Island, this is the only comp plan I've done in Rhode Island. In Massachusetts and across New England, I've worked with a number of communities. I'm doing two comprehensive plans right now in Massachusetts, one for South Hadley and one for Situate. So, and then I've done a number of redevelopment, revitalization downtown plans, so.
And does the state ever say, "Well, no, you're way off"? I mean, obviously, we've been involved with the state right along, so they're not going to say, "Wow, you missed, you missed, you're not even in the ballpark."
Before we came to you in July, we had the state do a review, and they had some comments which we've since addressed. Absolutely.
And they made some, I think, same, some of the concerns we had, how up to date was it? Was it refreshed? It was three years old, which is also a timing issue, Mark, that you've, that's why we're here tonight.
Right, right.
So, just speaking through past experience in other communities as well, I think, as West Warwick at one time, because the group that wrote West Warwick's plan is a group that wrote multiple plans throughout the state back in the 90s when the Comprehensive Planning Act went into effect. It was a consortium of a few people, primarily led by an individual named Sam Shumun. And a lot of these, they look exactly the same. They have the same cover. They look the same. And a lot of the plans had great difficulty getting through the state process, including this one. If you go back, and I'm not asking you to, because I wouldn't wish that on anybody, but if you go back and look at the 95 plan, you'll see how many years it took the state to approve it and that there's a big packet of additional material that was required to be adopted by the council back then to supplement the plan because the plan didn't meet their requirements. Same thing happened in the other community that I was in. It took multiple years to do that. So, this time around, understanding the process much better. It was new then, and there were a couple of iterations that a lot of communities went through. At the inception, we requested that a member of statewide planning staff be assigned to us. And he came to several of our meetings. He participated in our workshops. He had, you know, a ground-level view of the process we were going through. If we had any questions, concerns, we would run them by him. And as you said, Councilwoman, when we completed the plan, we sent it to them. They actually, chapter by chapter, were distributing it to the different state agencies early on in the draft process, so we weren't going too far afield. And then at the end, they came back with maybe five or six pages of corrections, updates, comments, things like that. We sat down with him individually and went through each and every item to make sure that he would be okay. So, I can't guarantee it, but my suspicion would be, once the town adopts the plan, sends it to the state, there should be a fairly quick turnaround. It should be adopted reasonably easily by the state.
So, we're not in jeopardy of being, we weren't going to be in violation, but there was grant money that could be lost on those types of things?
So, a couple of things. There are, in certain areas, when the state issues grant rounds, and I'll just use one that they just went through, which is open space. Several of the questions focus on local community. One of the questions always is, "Do you have an accepted and approved comprehensive plan?" No. Is this purchase for the open space recommended in your comprehensive plan? No. So, right away, you're starting off.
Yeah, right.
And there are very, in this one, there are some specific recommendations with regard to open space and preservation and things like that, that if the town was to go forward and apply for open space funding, it would be beneficial. You'd get extra points for those, and you'd probably score well.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
I have some questions. I'm kind of all over the dance floor, and I apologize, because I just, it is a lot in here. I just kind of picked out some things, and, again, questions I have. First of all, just as a note, the fishing pier, it states that, the fishing pier is complete. So, it states that we will have a fishing pier. So, I know this was done prior to that. So, if you can just make a note of that so it can change to make it right. Do you, either one of you know, how much land, I mean, West Warwick's pretty built up right now. How much land do we have that we're able to develop for both residential and commercial use, like percentage-wise?
I don't remember off the top of my head, but you're absolutely right. It is primarily built out, and so, the, one of the things the plan does is talk about redevelopment of existing areas. And that's where that recommendation for things like multifamily or commercial development gets concentrated in the villages. As we looked at it, and as Mark's looking at the section, this idea that you have these very sort of tightly knit, single-family neighborhoods, or two, single-family and two-family mix, it's not necessarily appropriate going forward for more intensive development, understanding that there are a number of developments that are already permitted. That's done. And so, where, if you want to have a variety of housing stock, would that make sense? And that's the focus on the villages there. But I don't have the exact build-out numbers. Is that there?
Yeah. So, 1,426 vacant parcels residential.
What do you mean by vacant? You mean a house that nobody lives in or just a piece of land?
No, vacant, a parcel, undeveloped parcel.
No, no building, yeah.
In size of R10, R7.5?
Various, various, R10, R8, 7.5, and R6.
And it's important to know that some of those might be non-conforming parcels. So, just because they're vacant doesn't mean that they're developable.
Well, only 312 parcels have sufficient amount of usable land for development of the single-family home.
Is that as of now?
That's as of, I would say, well, it might be down to like 309.
All right, all right.
Over the last year, I can say that single-family homes built, there might have been seven or eight in the town, single-family homes that have been built on these individual parcels. As far as commercial, 28.1 million square feet of usable land for commercial. I would say some of that is probably in buffer areas, but that's the number that's in here.
And how much of that's actually been used?
I'm trying to find it.
See by zone, yeah, exactly.
So, for the retail development by zone in ADCD, Arctic District Designed and Controlled District, you've got a potential retail facility of one. So, this is the, this is page, I know you don't all have it with you, but it's 13-6. That's actually table 13-6, vacant parcels and potential retail development by zone. B has 16, 93 vacant parcels that could accommodate 16. I think we'll just go with vacant parcels just so your eyes don't spin. BP is 12, CI 91, DCD is 18, for a total of 305 vacant parcels. We looked at the possibility of additional retail space. Now, this is not assuming absorption, but you could get another 3 million square feet of potential retail space, but again, that doesn't speak to demand at all. In terms of vacant parcels and potential residential development by zone, again, 1,421 vacant parcels, 312 potentially developable, a single family. And that comes in 13, which is the chapter on land use. So, it talks about zoning. It has your future land use plan in there. Yep.
Well, I guess one of the things that I'm a little confused about is on this draft section, on the introduction, actually, on the second page, where community goals, goals for the town. Number two, natural resources, item one, recreation, open space, and conservation opportunities will be incorporated into new development within the town. So, I guess my question is, if you had a new development in town, just say, for example, in the Natick area, I'm not thinking of anything specific, but far away from me. So, in the Natick area, and you have a new development come in, could be residential, it could be condos, whatever, what you're saying here is, we would love to have a recreation open space for that development. So, what happens if a plan comes in, say, in the Natick area, or Phoenix, or Clyde, or Prompt, or whatever, that there's, and you want to throw, you don't have that with that development. Could be a, say, homeowners association. Wouldn't this be contradictory to what possibly could be going in?
So, two different things. Comprehensive plan is, think of that as your 50,000-foot view where you're establishing your goals. It's zoning regulations that will actually change what could and could not happen here. So, your next step as a community, once this is approved by the state as an active plan, is to revamp your zoning. And then that is when you set the controls that say, in this particular area, we're looking for this type of recreation space. Could be a pocket park.
Exactly.
Could be, there's a community that I'm working with now, and what they desperately want in their downtown area is shaded pedestrian seating to make it more walkable for people who aren't maybe as mobile as others.
Safe.
So, exactly. So, that's where the regulations come in and determine what should be where and in which area. And that's a whole nother process. This just gives that higher level goal that says, "We think this is important."
Okay.
So, this is actually our wish list. This is what we would like, if we could start with a fresh slate, this is what we would like it to look like. Obviously, we have some constraints in place already.
Absolutely, yeah.
And then we have to decide what, if anything, we want to make part of law. Not necessarily what.
That's that aspirational component that you're saying. Yeah, and you want to jump in?
But that's where that goes. Right.
Emily's correct that, you know, this is the first step to the next step, and you're correct, Councilwoman, and you're correct, Councilman. And at the end of the day, here's what I would explain to you about the comment you're making. So, we adopt this, we update our zoning regulations, a developer comes in, he wants to submit a plaque for approval. The plaque does not include a park or recreation component to it. And we say, "No, because our regulations say this." And he becomes adamant and insists on going to a board. The board denies him. He files an appeal. The appeal goes to court. The town says, "Our comprehensive plan," which is an ordinance, an adopted document, "says that all new development shall have a recreational component." It gets imposed, or he withdraws the project. So, they're kind of interrelated, and this is the big picture, the wishes of the town. However, as someone would go through a process, it gives the town or the town's attorneys or the town's boards something to lean on, like the zoning board. If someone came in and said, they file an appeal with planning to zoning, say, "We don't want to do the park." And the zoning board says, "Well, that's nice, but that would be non-compliant with your comprehensive plan. That's one of the findings that's required."
Yeah.
It is a specific finding that's required. The plan says it. You're out of luck. You have to do it.
Is that, I'm just, I mean, I read this one. I should know the one we currently have, but it's a lot of information going back and forth. Is that in our current plan?
You have, that's the current.
No.
No, but that's the one, the one that we're looking to adopt. So, it's not, that's right. So, when you actually, when you read a zoning board thing, or a planning thing, it does say conforms with, I mean, that is, what does it currently say? Is it silent?
So, there's a provision, yeah, it's pretty much silent, but there's a provision in our regulations that has a, in lieu of.
Right, okay.
And what everyone does is they, they pay the, it's $2,500.
It's $2,500 bucks, yeah.
They pay the fee in lieu of, and you, that money goes into an account, and then if recreation projects come up, upgrades, improvements, or we've used it as matching funds for grants, but a lot of times, that focus, and I'm not saying that's a bad thing because it's actually a good thing to a degree, but a lot of times, and I'll tell you a way that you would use that, but a lot of times, that focus goes into the major recreational facilities in the community. In some neighborhood or some area on the other side of the community doesn't have any recreational facilities within walking distance. So, for example, if you had a neighborhood that was adjacent to a large recreational facility, rather than having put a little park in there, you might have them to give you a fee in lieu of to do an improvement there because it's within an approximate distance where someone could just walk to that park and utilize a playground or swingset that that fee would pay for, as opposed to putting a little park there that, you know, could be difficult for anyone but the neighborhood to use. So, that would be an example where you could.
So, the, in lieu of, in all likelihood, won't go away because it will be, it could be useful.
Yeah, so, what I, and again, we're.
I know what down.
But, yeah, but good question. And, you know, you put your hat on as you go through these. So, what you would do is for the, in lieu of, is you would create criteria that would specifically say, if you are in proximity to a recreation facility, you may do a fee in lieu of. Or if there is no recreational facility within your general area or your neighborhood, you don't qualify. You know, you write it in such a way that you would have parameters that it would be simple to follow.
And that's where the regulations go.
And that's where the regulations come in, is defining those criteria.
Well, what I, what I found, uh, past three years being on the council, and we've had a lot of people come up to us about some different projects that are in town, and they're actually in, in all of our wards. And that, what a few people have used, and I'll quote, is these developers come in, and they come in and they prostitute the town, and then they screw. Excuse my language, but that came from a former councilman and a former police chief, and that's very recent. And what basically happens is, they come in, they get approval, they, it's all, it's just great, we're going to make it great for the people, everybody's going to love it, they begin development, something happens. We constantly coming back before the council, and I think everyone can attest to it. And it's, to me, that's a safety issue. And, and I don't know how to address that in here, but maybe somebody would like to jump in, but really, I mean, you can, you look at them on, on Wakefield Street, you look at them on Nottingham, and I look at this as, as keeping the neighborhood safe. I mean, you have an existing neighborhood everywhere, and these new developers, they don't, they don't care about West Warwick, they come in, you know what they want, they want to come in, they want to make their money, they want to leave, that's the game. But who's left holding the bag, dealing with drainage issues, dealing, which is, I don't know how old the drainage system is here in town, but there's problems everywhere. But we're dealing with drainage issues, high water table, traffic. Are there any more? I'm sure there are more.
So, that's where the update to zoning, rules and regs for doing subdivisions, and enforcement come in. And so, we've addressed some of those, but that's where you get it, you, you leave the fifty-thousand-foot view and come down to on the ground, given the vision that we heard, given the concerns, and drainage and flooding was a lot of what we heard as well in terms of, of land use and problems with that. That's when you come down with the zoning, and you say, okay, what do we need to put in, and how do we enforce it, and how do we ensure that it's enforced? So, there's the approval process, and then there's the enforcement after that. And you can put pieces into the enforcement in terms of fines, then it, and this is back to the services and facilities, how do you potentially say, use those fines to help pay for a position, to do the enforcement? And that gets more complex in the higher level.
I disagree with you there, and the reason I'm saying that is, I'm not trying to give you a hard time, but I'm just dealing with the reality. You have the developer, developer that comes in with endless amounts of money. So, if you say, all right, here's a three thousand dollar fine, okay, here's three, here's five, here's six, the problem's not solved. And the people that'll live in town, whether it be a neighborhood, or a condo association, or a business, you suffer. And they paid the fine, that doesn't clear anything up, you're still dealing with the problem.
Yeah, and. Mark, let me just ask a question, because going back to that, you know, one of my developments that was a thorn in our side when I first came on the council, was off Sunrise, and it was done by a local developer here in West Warwick. And at the time, I, I recall the individuals coming before the council numerous times, as the project was completed or getting near complete, they would request some bond money, or whatever it is. But I, I haven't seen that lately, or do we require that? Because, for instance, there's other developments going on that I know have caused issues in the area with drainage during construction. One of them was, one of my constituents lost their entire pool, when there was a flood coming down, all the land washed right into his pool, and filled up with gravel. Another one is North Pleasant Street, houses further down the road now, they've never seen water in their backyard, are now seeing water in their backyard. Is, are we require, requiring, requiring a bond that protects these neighborhoods? So, we don't get it, hold in the bag, get left holding the bag.
So, so, a couple of things, the, the projects you're talking about are older projects that were approved many, many years ago, because North Pleasant is really. Bonding is implemented when a developer is building a, a public road, or something that's going to be turned over to the public. And a lot of the projects that are, we're having difficulty with are condominium projects, and the infrastructure within those condominiums is privately owned, and under the state statute, we don't have the ability to bond, they have, we have the ability only to enforce. So, if they were building a public road, I think, the most recent one was that, the Eva Court, I forgot the name of it now. There was a bond for that, and we actually still have, we're still actually holding money for that, I think, for the final paving for that, that's a project that started before I got here, but we've got a, we've got a cash bond in the form of a bankbook on that, that we're holding. So, if it's going to be dead.
Only when they develop public roads.
Only public roads or public infrastructure, that's correct.
So, for instance.
Public improvement is the term.
I'll, I'll just say, playgrounds, there's no bond required, there is no bond required when they're building condos.
Correct.
So, at, at that, how can we protect ourselves with that, those situations?
Enabling legislation. Up down to West Warwick, or you do it through an ordinance, as long as it doesn't violate state law, but you're going to have the developers, from commercial to residential, come down, hard on you saying that, you're prohibiting them from developing property.
Well, I don't want to prohibit anybody from developing, if, listen, because I have another question on the land. I mean, again, if, if somebody has the courage to come in, develop a piece of property, and they're going to put their hard-earned money into it, I understand that portion of it, but I also understand the portion of, that the neighborhood needs to be protected. The neighborhood needs to be, any future problems, I, I mean, listen, I, I, I understand, I always, you know, the land I have, you know, when I was building on that, the whole neighborhood went up in arms, and I said, well, listen, I, I have two choices there. I can build one house on it, or I can sell the land and let them build five houses on it. I said, it's, you know, what do you guys want to do? As a, as a neighbor, I met with my neighbors, this is way before I was a councilman.
To ensure against what councilman Charlie mentioned, if you don't have it in your rules and regulations right now, or your ordinances, and there's no state law prohibiting it, you put it in. If there's state law prohibiting it, or mentioning it and addressing it, then you may need enabling legislation to allow you to do it, because you know, all the other cities and towns are going to want the same guarantees. So, if, right now, there's a process whereby you can get a bond for a public road, and now you want a bond for any type of work done, any type, any time a, a backhoe goes in the ground, any time a, a foundation's put in, anything dealing with drainage, anything dealing with utilities, anything like that, you can do that.
And again, like I said, a person who's putting in one house, that usually doesn't really put any harm on anything per se. But a person who's putting in six, seven, eight, ten, twelve houses, you're, you're redeveloping the land, yes, I know the planning board, and I know the zoning board, and the, the building officials, and the planner's office, they all look at all those plans, because some of it doesn't even have to come before anybody, as long as they have the proper land. The only thing I'm worried about is who's responsible. For instance, you know, you develop a neighborhood, and now it becomes a driving hazard to that neighborhood. Who, who makes that decision? How do we protect those neighbors from that type of situation? You know, ultimately, people buy their houses, and I, 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 again, a believer, where you buy your house, always look around, because you never know what's coming around you. But, with that being said, if something's going to, I, I've been there twenty years, nothing's been there, and all of a sudden, it becomes a disaster, you know, how do you protect the neighbors from that? You know, as far as, and again, I know they can go to court, and they can legally do everything they have to do to defeat that, but we as a town, what can we do to protect it before it even goes that far?
So, in lieu of a bond for a private development, and I'm going to use the example of the Wakefield Street project, which was, again, that was a project where the local board approved a development which included substantial fill.
Is that Villanova you're talking about?
Yes, it is.
Potentially, yeah, it could be Villanova.
Is it, well, that's the sign.
It's around Wakefield Street.
That's the one where the, the fill just ruined the guy's pool and yard and basement, right?
So, it ended up on a few neighbors' properties. So, so, that's a private development, there was no bond required. And at a point, when that developer, he, he started doing the development without any permits, without any approvals, they didn't have their final approval in the process, and it really comes down to, I'm sorry, the council president walked away, comes down to enforcement from the local authority. The building official has the authority to go out and say, you don't have a permit, I'm shutting you down. If they don't stop, then he can bring the police out, and the police will shut them down. Now, a couple of things that does, is if a developer, you know, he's building, he's spending money, he's got an investment there, you shut him down, he's losing money, or she, the developer, is losing money. So, that, that is kind of a catalyst to get them to respond and make things right. In that particular project there, I recall receiving, I think we didn't have a building official at the time, or he was out, and, and we got a call, so, actually wrote a notice of violation, we sent him a violation, they were in within two days with an engineer, trying to come up with a solution, and we imposed, we did a stop work, or imposed a fine, got him. Since then, he started misbehaving again, but it's a difficult thing, and it takes a lot of hand-holding and a lot of oversight, but it really, and these, those types of projects, comes down to enforcement. The, the local enforcement authority has to go out, and they have to be diligent, and they have to.
Who is that, the local?
The building official. The building office is the, really, the only office that has the authority to issue stop work orders to enforce on construction projects. So, it's a, it's kind of a fine line, right? So, you want to welcome new development into your town, you want good development in your town. You never know, you know, which, which developer's going to do a great job and what isn't, what developer isn't, or something may happen during the process.
Or even financial problems, or.
Whatever, a lot of things, a lot of things can happen, I mean, councilman, you have one in your ward, it looks like, I, I drive out there, I'm horrified, it looks like a moonscape. I just, today, I just wrote an email to the developer telling him he's got to fix some things over there, because they're wrong. But the fact of the matter is, yeah, it's, it's a diligence thing, and it's a manpower thing. You know, some developers, I think there was one on Quaker Lane across from the courthouse, that project came in, was approved by the planning board, went to the zoning board, it's constructed, it's complete, and it been, there were a few issues there with a neighboring condo, those issues, you know, those were, I think they turned into personal issues between individuals fighting with each, with each other, but that project got built with little effect on any of the abutting neighbors. It's, it's done, it's built, it's, it's being sold.
What, what had happened was, they, they put a fence up on the new condo association, and then they took all the junk, and threw it, left it over the fence.
That's being a bad neighbor, yeah.
It, it is, but, but at that point, it's, you know.
It became two individuals, a neighbor upsetting another guy, and they, and they actually had, you know, I don't want to get too detailed into it, but they had words, and, and, you know, the, you know, the minimum housing should go out and say, this is no good, I'm going to cite you, you shouldn't have done that, you know.
Can I ask another question on housing? On number five, under the community goals for the town, number five housing, number three, it says, new housing developments that are compatible with the existing surrounding land use, which is great, new development's great. But it will create a safe and desirable neighborhood atmosphere. Now, what happens, and this is kind of like leaning on what council president Goslin said, when you got, like, and I named the issues, you have issues all the time with traffic. One of the biggest issues I, I felt, I feel we have in town right now, is, again, it's very difficult to control, and it's everywhere, any town USA, it's speed, you know, and, and enforcement can only, we have a great police department, but unless you have a thousand officers around at one, on one shift, you're not going to control the speed. The stop signs are great, as long as people stop. There's issues of, again, I mentioned drainage, I mentioned water table. But the word safe, though, are you, what kind of safety are you talking about? There's different kinds of being safe.
There are, there are a couple of different types, certainly, traffic, as you mentioned, is one of them. One of the other things that we noticed as we were doing this work is housing stock in West Warwick, there's a lot of it that's older housing stock. And so, as new housing stock either comes in, it sort of upgrades the whole thing, so you can move from someplace that's older, potentially, to someplace that's newer, that then opens up the older one to be rehabbed into something. So, when we're thinking safe, we're thinking the neighborhood itself, but also individual buildings, some of which may not be fully substandard, but are certainly not necessarily up to more modern construction, or more modern fit-outs. So, that's what we're thinking.
What do you mean by neighborhood safe, though? I'm just kind of confused with that.
So, if you have a neighborhood of houses, right, so that the housing stock is upgraded over time, so rehabbed. So, if you're, if housing is unsafe, for example, say it's pre nineteen seventy-nine, right, it may have lead paint in it, it may have asbestos in it, so as that's upgraded over time, it increases the safety. If you have a house in a neighborhood that is older, it may, you may see like a porch roof sagging off of it, again, as this is upgraded over time, so we're talking about that sort of physical safety.
I'm talking, I'm thinking way different.
Yes.
I'm thinking of, of these different kinds of safety, because you have different kinds of people in different, different areas.
No, we're, we're specifically talking about housing types, age of housing stock. One of the things that we run into in a lot of communities is the idea of a diversity of housing types, so that you're a young person coming out of college, or trade school, or whatever, you're starting a career, there's a housing type that's available for you, you get married, or you have kids, or a combination of both, there's a housing type for bringing up families. You're older, your kids have gone off, you're an empty nester, there's a housing type that's appropriate for older people to move to downsize. It's safe for somebody who might be less able, it's safe for somebody who's wanting to age in place, that general type of overall safety, yeah.
So, for instance, I'm thinking the word safe a little bit different, I'm thinking more physical safe when I'm looking at, since I'm similar to the traffic. Basically.
Sidewalks, lighting, any of those things would also work, so that's the, that's the sort of public realm of safety. So, in that respect, we think about connected sidewalks, so you're not walking down a sidewalk, and suddenly you have to cross the street, and there's no sidewalk on the other side, is, is the area that you're walking in, is it appropriately lit for the type of area? So, you might have less lighting in a single-family and area, more lighting in a downtown area, because you're going to have more people, that's sort of safety.
See, I'm, I'm thinking more along the lines, I, I think a little bit differently, outside the box, which I'm not disagreeing with you, but I, I'd like something to possibly be added, you know, if the council agrees, I don't know. Again, I'm going back to these new developments, because you're really, what we deal with, what, I won't, I won't speak for anybody, but you deal with a lot of concerns up here, and especially, I can, you know, there's, there's a couple of new developments going in, in my area, one being on Naragansett Avenue, which is in my area, there's going to be fifteen houses in there. Questions have already come to me of what's, rumors, you know, what's going on, and, and all this, and this, the word safety comes up, and I'm looking at, like, physical with, with the traffic, maybe a, uh, emotional safety on that street, per se, you have a lot of people that are older, uh, some in wheelchairs, you have people that, they watch the speed go up and down, you know, causing anxiety, which could be emotional, mental, which I think this is something we have to think about, because you have a lot of different types of people in the world, you know, rather than just a particular house. If this is, I disagree with a neighborhood coming in, or development coming in, could be condos, whatever, where it's going to cause anxiety for the existing neighbors, because they, they're here already. And this leads me back to, I'm not trying to be negative, I'm just trying to be with, this is the reality that we deal with. And it comes into, again, with the new developers coming in, you know, on Wakefield Street, on Naragansett Avenue, on, in Phoenix, in Clyde, Nottingham, just coming in and kind of doing what they're going to do to get through, and then it could be lack of oversight, I don't know. But I think that type of safety should be put in here. I don't know if anybody agrees, disagrees, but.
Councilman, are you, are you focused in the housing, are you on number five?
Number five.
Five, five, chapter five.
Five, chap, yeah, sorry, chapter five, number three.
Yeah.
Number three.
Where it says, new housing developments that are compatible with existing surrounding land uses. I think we understand what that means, right? So, that means, don't put condos in the middle of residential neighborhoods, and housing stock will create a safe and desirable neighborhood atmosphere.
Desirable to who, though? Is that to the developer, or to the, to the town council?
Well, it's, it should be, it should be to the residents of the neighborhood, and the people who are moving in, not necessarily the developer. And I think if you go to transportation, a lot of these are intertwined and interlinked, so you, if you go into transportation, you start to read some of the things there, safe, a safe, transportation, right? Convenient, fully integrated transportation system.
Safe and efficient pedestrian access.
Yeah, safe and, yeah.
A lot of what you're talking in terms of older people, that becomes public realm infrastructure, so having sidewalks of the right width, having them connected, having them be a material that is comfortable for people who are using wheelchairs, narrowing roadway, and I don't know of a.
And I don't know the specific street here, but certainly in other communities that we've worked with, you find that the roadway width is so wide. It's actually inviting people to speed, you know? They come down like, oh, there's a wide straight road, here we go.
We have a lot of roads in town here that.
Yeah, they call it a street diet.
Yeah.
They do, they do.
Is road diet or a street diet?
You narrow it, it's, it's traffic calming measures. Um, you don't want straightaways, you, you know, um, you, you know, lengthy straightaways. You want to bend roads, things like that. Um, there's something called safe streets or smart streets.
Safe streets.
And we've got, we've got some of that in here, where you should have, you should have sidewalks. And I, I know it's an older community, hasn't been developed, but you know, new development coming in, it's starting somewhere. You should have sidewalks, especially when they're in proximity to schools, there should be sidewalks.
Yeah.
One of my favorite traffic calming is actually planting trees, you know, on the side of the road between sidewalks. If you plant them at a certain distance part, I don't, I don't remember which it is, but there's a certain distance that if you're going too fast for that road, your eyes actually automatically understand you're moving too fast because they see the, the repetition of the trees. And it's a completely sort of unrecognized street calming thing. So there's a lot of different pieces that can come into that. If you do have a development coming in, changing your regulations again such that maybe some of that fee in lieu is going to, you're putting in a sidewalk, you're planting street trees, you're shading that sidewalk to make it more comfortable. So that's where that attractive to both the current and the new residents coming in, it's really improving that physical infrastructure.
I was looking to see more, you know, there's a, there was an issue a couple of years ago in my, my area, um, where I get a phone call. A, uh, a car was going down a straightaway and went to turn the corner and it went right into somebody's garage.
Yep.
Which, I couldn't believe it when I got a phone call about, actually a friend of mine, and very upset. And the car backed out of the closed garage, which they were in about ten minutes prior with his kids. And one of his kids, um, is shown as autistic. So when I'm talking safe, that, and I'm not going to go into anything else that happened, that's, that's their business. But let's just say it's, it's, will never be forgotten.
Mm-hmm.
And that child now has to deal with that and most likely be worried. And that really plays a big effect on, on a child like that. And again, I, I think some of this has to be in here because you're dealing with different kids like that.
So that complete, absolutely.
People in wheelchairs.
Right.
You know, who don't have that access.
Mm-hmm.
But they had to re, redo their whole home. And, I mean, it's just, it, it was an accident.
Right.
Which happened, I mean, I have, you know, I've seen the police report, you know, I've seen the house, you know? But I just think at that point, what calming measure is it for that child who has to live with that forever?
And, exactly. And your point is a good one. Not everybody on a street is able to move out of the way of a car that's speeding dangerously. We do have the complete streets recommendation in there. So in the transportation chapter, it's a good point that some of the things that you're looking for may be in a different chapter from the one you expected in. But that's a critically important piece and that's where that public infrastructure has a huge impact on that feeling of safety, so.
Councilwoman, that, that incident, your terms, is that at the end of the year where it takes a hard right near the cemetery?
Yeah, cemetery's locked.
Yeah, that's.
Because that's not on.
So that's, that's, that's a, that's a terrible situation. That road, for anyone that isn't familiar with what the council was, goes straight and then it takes a hard ninety-degree right. But if you drive straight, you drive straight right into this house and there was nothing there to stop the car from going there. So now, if that was a gentle curve, there was curbing on the street at the sidewalk, someone wouldn't be driving straight to a house, right?
And, and that absolutely, I think we're responsible to make sure that's taken care of. But I'm su- not sure that it falls under this, being the fifty thousand foot. But I think on a local level, I think we do need to make sure with rules and.
The general statement of creating safe streets, the safe neighborhoods does. And then, you're right, Councilwoman, when you're doing your, your design, you should, you know, where you locate driveways in your zoning, you shouldn't have driveways located at intersections, should be at least twenty to thirty feet away from an intersection. Things like that, where this one, I, I, I know exactly where you are. I think the, you drive down this road, you know, if you were incapacitated or it was dark or something, you'd, you'd think you were driving straight right through the driveway, right through the garage.
So that, again, I believe that this talks about those things, but it's incumbent upon us as a community to have people in place and management in place, administration in place to make sure when a plan comes before planning and zoning that those items are addressed. So absolutely, they should be addressed.
So I'm, can I just, I'm not trying to be a dead horse here, I'm just trying to figure out this, this whole thing because this is a five-year plan.
Ten years.
Ten year, ten year plan, so.
Last one was a twenty-five, right?
So, so right, again, the desire, desirable neighborhood.
Yes.
I think that's, it's very objective, but very, I mean.
But remember, this is a goal. So these are goals that then get translated and, and when you're writing goals, goals start off being quite broad. So you have this broad goal, we want a safe and desirable neighborhood. Then the strategies come in to talk about what that actually means.
When does that happen?
That's in the chapter. Each chapter has the strategies. And then the actions for each strategy are also listed. Now, some of the strategies are policies, so there's not necessarily a specific action. And you see that broken down, chapter by chapter, and then in the implementation plan. But it's the actions that are the, in the implementation plan that are the individual steps. So you'll see, we should have safe streets and then that's an overall goal. The actions set out who's doing what. It may be, and, and I don't have the exact wording without going and looking at, but one of the actions could be, evaluate and adopt a complete streets policy. So that's the sort of thing where it gets translated down into those actual steps.
Would that be an ordinance at that point?
It could be a, a complete streets, regulation or ordinance. It depend, again, depending on the action, um, some of them will come through you, but not all actions come through the town council. So that's important to note as well.
So all the actions, if it didn't come from the town council, who would it come from?
Depends on what the action is. So most of them, I think, are going to end up coming from you. But there might be something like an enforcement issue or, um, a policy issue that you set, but is actually implemented by somebody else. Um, we talked about a couple of other different things, but you wanted to add something, so.
Yeah, yeah, so, so a lot of this is zoning, right? And, and a zoning ordinance is an, is an ordinance and it's adopted by the council. Um, development review regulations, which are planning regulations, are not adopted by the council. Uh, they're, the, the authority for those comes under the planning board and the planning board creates their own rules and regulations and a lot. Though, so, so the way this works is comp plan, zoning ordinance update, development review regulations or subdivision regulations, those are the, those are the steps. So that after this, the zoning ordinance would have some of these implemented as actual ordinances and regulations, hard ordinances, regulations. And then, for example, streets, how you design streets, streets layouts, you know, angles, things like that. Um, how you design lots so that they don't, you don't have roads going right into lots like that. That's in your subdivision regulations. That would be something that would be under the planning board and it would be in their regulations, which they are responsible for adopting. They have to go through a public process, they need to be vetted and there's workshops and things like that, similar to what we did with this, similar to what you would do with the zoning ordinance as a process. But at the end of the day, once all three are updated, hopefully you have an improved process, you have improved regulations and you improve your community.
So that, that desirable would be the desire of the planning, that would be, okay.
The only, the only, the only question I have, when you talk about vacant parcels, that doesn't include parcels that can be subdivided, does it? So for instance, I'll give you an example. I have two acres in the Phoenix area, some of it's in R eight, some of it's in R ten, but it's all one lot. But it could be subdivided based upon, that, that's not including.
Some, some of those parcels, some of that three hundred and twelve may be parcels that can be subdivided. We just counted them as a vacant parcel.
How about if it was wetland that's considered not a buildable lot? So for instance.
Right.
Um, Renadette Street has a giant piece of land that's vacant, but it's got a piece of it that's not wet and then the rest of it's wet. That's, is that considered?
It's not, if, if it can't be built, if the, um, dimensional standards and the buffers from the wetland are such that it can't be built on, that it's not counted as a buildable lot.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure how much we have following.
Yeah.
So, I'm, I'm going to just address the elephant in the room, just for the heck of it. Um, yep. Condominiums and the number of condominium developments going up there. Yeah, you're ready to step, Emily, you want to step right away, I know, I get it, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not your responsibility, right?
So there are a number of them that are going up and, and we, you know what? We have to understand that when people own land, um, if they're looking to use it and get rid of it, we have to understand, we can't just do a not in my backyard thing.
Yeah.
For someone who lives on Wakefield Street, I get it, trust me. Um, yes, yeah, so. Overall game plan, I'm sure you've had a number of people visit.
I have, you know, when I first came here and I saw some of the condo developments that had been approved, I was shocked, to be honest with you. Hilltop, you have to drive through a residential neighborhood to get to a condo development in someone's backyard. It's crazy. The one on North Pleasant, it's, it's all single family. And then next to it is a condo development. So some of the, some of the things that we, we've written in here in general terms, when should condos, when do you implement a condo? And, and, or multifamily, we'll call it multifamily. Certainly in mills, I think the mills, that's a good use. And that's one of the things we say in here, that the multifamily should be in, in mill redevelopment because that's a good use for that. The other one is transitions between commercial and residential zones. So if you're coming, you know, off of, off of a main road and you've got a neighborhood and you got a, you've got a large parcel, maybe between that main road and, and the single family neighborhood. But they should not be within single family neighborhoods and a lot of them are. And a lot of them that we get complaints about are because they're at a higher density than the neighborhood. So I'll just use Hilltop for example because I think those lots over there are like ten thousand square foot lots, more or less. And then in the back, you've got fifty condo units going in these people's backyard. And they're on these ten thousand square foot lots and then in their backyard, they've got fifty, you look out your window, I've got fifty condos in my backyard. And I have to drive through a residential neighborhood to get there. So a couple of things we have in there, and, and the direction that I would like to go, like the town to go is, they have to be adjacent to or have direct access to a main road or a, a main road. So you can't drive through a neighborhood to get there. So that would eliminate many of them. They cannot be located in heavily developed, single family neighborhoods. That they are to be used as transitions between commercial, um, and residential properties as a buffer. So we write those things in there. None of that exists. Right now, our condo regulations or multifamily regulations simply say, it's one paragraph in the zoning ordinance, says allowed in all residential districts and the density is, if you're over five acres, it's seventy-five hundred square feet per unit, or if you're under, it's five thousand square feet per unit, something like that. That's all it says. So that anyone who wants to put a condo anywhere, if you meet the density, it's going to come to the planning board, it's going to go to the zoning board and they're going to, they're going to let it go.
Let's face it, condo, so condo development gets more money for their buck because they're fitting.
Oh, yeah. It's a higher density. The, the, the infrastructure costs are far less because they don't have to meet the standards of a town road for width, curbing, sidewalks, none of that. And it's just the density. You could build so many more units. Now, there has been, and I've heard it, um, there are people within the community that have opinions. We love condos because they pay a lot of taxes and they don't put any kids in the school. Well, if you keep building condos, you put any kids in the school, then you'll have no, you'll have no kids to go in your school. You'll have an old community and then you're going to have to provide services. So you should have, a community should have a varied, uh, range of different housing types. And Councilwoman, when I looked at it, and I, and I have the numbers up in my office, I'm sure you've heard them because they've been disseminated at different meetings and hearings. We've got over four hundred approved condo units that are not constructed yet in the top of West Warwick. That's enough. The, they can't be absorbed. And you'll see these condo developments, they're struggling to sell their units. You know, you, you've got some in your ward, they're, uh, North Pleasant, I think they made it sold six or eight in there.
They have eight.
Out of, out of, out of like twenty-six that they had under construction, now that they want to come back for another, I don't know. How many?
Phase two.
Phase two for another ninety units.
We all do, I think we all have.
The fifty, the fifty, Councilwoman, I think that are in yours. I think he might have built two out of fifty. The one on Wakefield Street, they might, I think there's two units there out of twenty-four.
Seventeen, not, not that we're counting.
Councilman D'Amico has a hundred and seventeen unit, where I think there may be four or six built. None of them have sold.
Four phases.
None of them have sold.
So when do, so you, you say.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yeah.
None of them been sold still?
None of them are sold.
No, not two, like I was told, but zero. How, how come? How, why do you think?
That's just an ownership issue.
That's a, that's an ownership issue.
So you say they, they have been approved. Does approval ever expire?
So, um, several years ago, the state implemented a tolling statute, which allowed projects to go many, many years. That statute expired last June. Um, so people who have projects have until this June to start them. So a lot of those have been initiated. There are a few that are in the files that would probably, probably expire. Any project that received the final approval and the final approval had been recorded in the clerk's office is good forever. So I think the majority of those are under construction right now. Um, and I have people come in two or three times a year looking to build new condo units in West Warwick. Try to dissuade as many as I can, to be honest with you.
Any other questions? Any concerns? I think we touched base on everything. So, Mark.
One more, I'm sorry, because you, you did mention schools. And I know you had, there was a school rep on the, on the committee and I think they're doing their own review. I think I've heard that at one of their school committee meetings actually, that they are, they're going to do their own space review and, and where they are and how they're.
So I'm flipping back through because you, you note that schools is not a called out chapter.
Right.
Um, so we covered it a little bit under services and facilities. There was a request to do education there, but there's not a big piece there because schools have, as you say, their own process. So where we tried to look at education was, how does it impact the rest of the town? Because to Mark's point earlier, this is primarily a land use document and then those pieces that follow on from the land use. So there are a number of things that feed into schools. Housing, of course, is one of them. Um, children live in houses, children want to play and so recreation and the ability to do that is important. Your overall economic development is important, but it doesn't get called out as a specific chapter because the schools do their own planning pieces, so.
You did interview the superintendent.
We did, did interview the superintendent. We had a, um, actually, Mark set up, was it a day or two days? Two days of interviews with all of the department heads, which we did towards the beginning of the process. So we did interview the superintendent of schools for this, so incorporated the pieces that were appropriate to a comprehensive plan.
What, what does it cost? I'm just curious, um, it won't be so much, or maybe a condo, but if, if somebody moves into a vacant house on a street and they have one child, what does it cost to send that child? When they're going to pay, all right, somebody moves into, builds a house, okay? And they're going to pay taxes on that house, whatever that is, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand. So the town gets tax money, but the town also is on the, has to give fire, police, um, schooling. What is, what is the, what is the generation?
I think it's nine thousand, isn't it?
No, no, fifteen to fourteen.
No, 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 no.
It's twenty and change, but it gets reduced.
It gets reduced.
Talking about schools, he's, you're just talking about.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about, I mean, we're, no, we're getting a tax, we're getting a tax from the house.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Right?
What the, what the services, service cost is?
Yes.
So we're getting, say, five thousand, service cost would be.
You're not even close to touching the service cost. If, if, if you, if you include schools, you're not even close. I think, and I'm not sure, but I saw a number, the local community contribution to a student, I think, is around nine thousand. The overall cost, including the state, is like fourteen or fifteen thousand.
It's higher than that, it's higher than that. And it depends on what services are needed, so yes.
Generally, so, so.
Correct, correct.
If someone's paying five thousand dollars in taxes and they have one child in the school system, it's costing the town four thousand dollars in addition to that, never mind the other services, to support that child in the school system.
Okay. What happens is no kids.
Okay, what happens if there's no kids?
So if, so if there's no kids, the five thousand dollars goes to the community with regard to other services that are unrelated to children. So that would be police, fire, running town hall. I, I have those, I don't have them off the top of my head, but I kinda have a general idea in my office. I had a couple of planners over the last few years actually do some studies related to condo developments, to see what it costs, um, per, um, unit cost to the community for DPW. And what we did, what I had them do was break it down by services. So, so they looked at every service in the community that someone would utilize, the senior center, the library, um, DPW, um, you know, uh, well, sewer, sewer's paid separately, under its own user fees and user costs, but, you know, the tax assessor, tax collector, these are all support services that people utilize, that they contribute to. And I, I don't know the number off the top of my head, I'd, I'd be making up, but it's far more than five thousand dollars per household.
Okay, so we're getting five, or we're giving more?
Yeah.
All right, so, maybe that's why we have money problems. I mean, I mean, am I wrong?
Well, hold on, let me, let me point something out to you. You gotta remember something. Now, Dave Goslin is an example, I'm using him. I have two houses side by east, side by side.
Side by east.
One, side by east, depending on which part of the aisle you're from. My two family at one time had three children in it. My taxes on that two family, I know, were not bringing in. Now, I have two single gentlemen that are in that house, that have, they really use nothing, they don't, they bring up their trash once every three weeks, so on and so forth. So back ten years ago, my house wasn't contributing enough to cover the school system. But now, Dave Goslin's other house has two children in the school system also. I'm still now, my children are now out of the school system, except for one, but my children are almost out of the school system totally. I'm still paying my taxes, and I'm still be paying, if you look on your tax bill, there's an education portion, and there's a town portion. But my neighbor who just, next to me, just had children, so it's a cycle. And, and that's what it is, is, so when you say the towns have, one of the money problems, it's usually a cycle of, okay, now, Mary Beth, all her children came through, through our school system, Timmy's children came through our school system, but no longer through it, but they're paying their taxes now.
I get all that.
But Jay has children in, and John has children in, so it's, it's an evil cycle.
But if you still have the kids. If I'm, if I'm alone, and I, and I, and I'm in a house, I'm paying X amount for taxes, because it doesn't matter who's in the house. I'm still paying X amount for services as potential to use the tax assessor, the tax collector, fire, police. What, so, is that, so if I, I'm paying you the five thousand for taxes, am I getting more than five thousand in service? As a single person?
As a, I, I, I don't.
Do you know, do you know what?
Depends on the services you need, but, but. Hold on, Tim, Tim, wait, 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 so.
Just, just say, take the lease, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, even though they haven't been to your house. They're patrolling, keeping your neighborhood safe.
Yeah.
That's number one, fire. So how do you put a price on that? So for example, way back when, when the mayor got rid of garbage, garbage service. Went to, they privatized it, where you were paying, I think back then, maybe, say, twenty-five hundred dollars a year for that. If you kept paying the weekly pickup and drop-off, and then to take it to the landfill, they were charging, I think, fifty dollars a week. So you were paying two hundred dollars a month, times twelve, you were paying twenty-four hundred dollars a month, if it planned out that way, just for garbage. So police and fire said, well, garbage is worth twenty-four hundred dollars a year, what are we worth? This is back in the early nineties. So you're gonna take it day by day, as to what the expense is. It's not like you're saying, I cut the tax assessor once a year, but I'm using fifteen minutes. They're always there to use.
I'll give you an example, I, I've used the ambulance twice this month with my father, and, but I didn't use it ten years prior to that. You know, so it's kind of like.
It's not a, it's not a usage fee, it's factored there, it's available for you.
It's called an ad valorem tax.
I, I understand that, I'm just trying to look at number versus number.
Yeah, so, so.
You've made that one very interesting.
This, 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 Councilman, there's more than just that, though. So, so you've got, you've got your residential property tax, you've got your commercial property tax, which is much higher than your residential property tax. You've got your tangible property tax for business owners, you've got your automobile excise tax. So all of these go into a, it's called an ad valorem tax, they all go into a pot, and that pot pays for everything. So if you bond, so the, the street paving, the bonding, five million dollars, that's coming out of people's tax revenue. That comes out of your tax revenue to pay that back over time with interest. So, you know, if you drive on a road, you're conceivably receiving a service from the town, because there's no money in, in building those.
Every line of expense you're contributing.
Right, no, I, I get it. You open up a big variable, because every family, no matter which family it is, has different needs, whether it's in education, whether it's in police and fire, you, you know, as people get older, they use the ambulance more. You know, police, you could use it for a ton of different things, good, bad, whatever. Um, education, all depends what is needed up there, so every, every household has different, um, expectations of the attached.
I, 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 I had a, I'll tell you a funny story, if you don't, you don't mind. So I was sitting, a few years, I think the first year I was here, the second year I was here, I was sitting at a budget, the, the meeting. And this older gentleman came in, I'll call him a gentleman, but he was a very cantankerous individual. And he sits next to me, and I, I think the, the, the woman from the Kentucky Valley towns, Kendra, the, the first Kendra that I met, I think they've had two Kendras since. Kendra, it was Kendra one, it was Kendra, it was Kendra one. She was sitting next to me. So, so the guy comes in, and he's cranky, and I looked at him, and I said, what are you here for? School, schools, I don't wanna pay for schools. Ah, I don't, I don't have any kids in school, I shouldn't pay for school. And I looked at him, because my brother has had this argument with me, and I said, you don't wanna pay for anyone in schools? He said, no, I don't have any kids in the school. I said, did you go to school? He's like, yeah, I went to school. I said, well, someone paid for you to go to school. I said, now it's your turn to pay for someone else to go to school. He looks at me, and I said, you know what they call that? What? I said, it's called a society.
Yeah, it ought to be a community.
That's my answer to that question, so.
No, you do, and, and you do get that, you know, you get people saying, why am I paying for education, I don't have any kids in the school? But again, at one time you did, or you may, or you may not have, or you went, exactly. Um, it might have been a different era, it might have been a different cost, but you know what, it's called inflation, um, but.
We all, we, we all work together to support the county.
Yeah, it, it's, that's a tough one, like, Council.
Well, I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just trying to clear it off, it's a residential to condos.
I respect, I respect that question.
So, I mean, you could say, should we, should, you know, if we build a house, we get five thousand in taxes, but it's nine thousand in services generally, right?
Yeah.
So, so should we just not build houses? So that's a, that's a philosophical discussion you have, it's not really a practical one, because you could have a house with one individual in it that's not a community service, and that supplements the house with the two kids.
Right, no, I, I guess, I'm just trying to think, you know, we're, we're kind of, we're very dense here.
Yeah, so, but what I would say is, whenever you bring new, let's say, just take residential. So you bring new residential homes into a community, it lifts the community, people in that general area might see a new house, say, you know, I'm gonna do some improvements to my house, and it, it brings up the community, if it's done right, potentially.
Well, that's the thing, if it's done right.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's what you.
Question is, it may not be done.
Well, if, if it's not done right, and you're, and you're jamming a bunch of things into a little area, then that kind, that could depress the community.
Exactly, that's what I'm trying to.
And if we can broaden the tax base with commercial properties, that would be wonderful. That's where you wanna do, to take the burden off the, the tax base, so that, that's the ultimate goal. Question just about how this is bound, what happens, because when you get back to the charts, being able to read all the way across the line, does that, is that gonna be easy to do? How is that gonna?
Yeah, so the charts, the charts will be, will be foldouts, they'll be on lodger, and they'll be like.
Okay, perfect.
For simplicity's sake, and.
I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
All right, any other questions, concerns? We're not voting on anything tonight currently, so it'll be on the next agenda. Council feels comfortable.
Is that, is that true?
Do we need to blow this?
We had it on there.
There's, there's an ordinance, yeah, there's an ordinance there.
Oh, we do have an ordinance on here.
It was tabled, but you'd have, I think you'd have to take it off the table.
Any reason not to do that, is this solicitor?
It depends, if you, if you have the two readings, you, no one obviously attended tonight, but they might be watching on the, uh, on the, um, video, so you may wanna have one other meeting at the same time as the town council, to schedule it on the same night.
Are you saying before the council?
If there are questions that the council may have, or the public may have, you can address them at that time. If not, at the council meeting, you can have it on the agenda to vote.
So is this technically, so.
I would take a first reading.
Yeah, why wouldn't we do the first reading right now?
I, I do have one more question.
Council's, Council's pleasure.
I, I brought up a lot of concerns, questions tonight. Are we voting just as it is right now, or are we voting to put some of that in? Because I think some of that was, was, was important.
Well, I don't know.
Efficient care.
Yeah.
Some of the, some of the concerns you raised might be addressed, as they indicated, through the change of regulations and rules with zoning and planning, and also possible, uh, legislation, enabling legislation at the state house for some of the concerns, especially about the bonds. So that wouldn't be part of this, this would be part, that would be part of other legal act matters.
I would assume the state wouldn't want really specific things in here, that, that they'd want it to fall to the community to handle. That's correct, I would assume, yeah. So.
Pleasure?
Well, you have some, you have some time constraints, so why, why wouldn't we move, I would move the ordinance, yeah. Do the first reading?
So Marion, you can do the, uh.
Can you read it?
Reading?
Roll call.
Oh, she has to do the reading of the comprehensive plan.
Are you gonna, are you gonna ask her to read the entire plan, or wait the reading?
Wait the reading of it, maybe just the heading?
Just the heading and the, uh, and the, um, ordinance number, and then you can wait the reading.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the town of West Wallack by adding there to Appendix D, entitled Town of West Wallack Comprehensive Plan Update 2019. And did you say it was previously tabled?
It was previously tabled, so I need a motion to take it off. I'm gonna make a motion to take it off the table, please. Motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I have it. So Marion, the second reading will be on.
Thank you, nice job.
I got it.
Thank you, Emily, I appreciate it, sorry to, to bring you back again.
Tell Paul, repent, it would be too close.
We, we give. To your plan. And we give people an opportunity to be here and.
His right.